Anyone who can sign in, please do so at the clipboard in the front. And if any visitors want to sign up for public comment, there should be a sheet for that as well. So I'll start with our land acknowledgement. All Spokane Public Library buildings sit on the traditional homelands of the four bands of the Spokane Tribe of Indians, upper band, middle band, lower band, and chillicothe. Since time immemorial, the Spokane Tribe of Indians has lived and cared for these grounds, identifying themselves as flush abater. We pay our respects to their elders, past, present, and emerging. We show gratitude to the land, river, and peoples who have been fishing, hunting, harvesting, and gathering here for generations. May we learn from one another's stories so that we may nurture the relationship of the people of the Spokane Tribe and to all those who share this. Alright, so any proposed changes to the agenda or shall we consider it a thought? There are none, we will follow the agenda as presented. So the first item is approval of the July 2022 board minutes.
I move that we approve those forty minutes as the second.
Alright, it's been moved and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Next, we have the approval of the July 2022 bills and contributions.
I move that we approve the bills and contributions in the amount of $2,062,083 cents.
Same.
Alright, it's been moved and seconded, all in favor? Alright. Alright, and now we have the financial report with Nicole Edwards. Nicole?
Thank you, appreciate it. Okay, so I'll start with the library operations portion. So for July 2022 and our cash and investments trend, as of July month end, the library is able to cover 172 days of operation. Currently, our cash and investment balance, which includes reserve for capital of $639,706, and net of encumbrances of about $72,300, is $6,133,158. For expenditure trends, July expenditures came to $993,501. Personnel costs make up 78% of that amount. That does include prepaid periods for the month of July. Payments for annual software licensing sold by $5,929. We also purchased $39,621 on our books and materials for that month. We had some training and traveling costs leading to $8,780. Our July utilities were $19,569, and we had interfirm charges that totaled $9,187. Business office news, we have established some record keeping for the online event rooms and booking. Now, our financial records have integrated into our revenue recognition process as an entire system for doing that. Added that task and it's going pretty smoothly. I'd like to open it for any questions around operations before we move on to the bond change.
Is that the record keeping for the event rooms, is that related to if we're doing commercially used?
The commercial.
Correct, yeah. Okay, any other questions for Nicole? Alright, thank you Nicole. Penny, you're up now with Steve Bond.
Alright, thank you. Well, we'll start off tonight with a purchase order that we issued under the increased threshold authority. That was issued to Leonian Keeble in the amount of $68,382, which does include the sales tax. Now, this is for work outside of the contract that we're currently trying to close. And specifically, this is work at the Hive. It is to cover the addition of a sink that was not installed initially in one of the three studios. And also for a mini-split air conditioning unit system to cool the server room. We are experiencing a cross-the-branch problem at all of our open locations where the audiovisual and server racks at the branches are not, they're overheating, the rooms are not cool enough. So, you know, I think perhaps there wasn't the expectation that the racks would be as full as they are. So it is forcing us to come back through and install these split systems. The Hive was the most concerning, and so that one is going in right now. Liberty will be up next, we'll have to have the same treatment done at Shadle. Central, I'm suddenly not remembering if that was addressed already with Walker. And I think Lorraine gave me a positive look there. And we've been able to get those added at Indian Trail in South Hill. Next up on my agenda here, I have a memorandum from the Washington State Auditor's Office in my report tonight. We were included in the 2020 citywide accountability audit, as we always are. They were specifically looking at public works competitive procurement. There were four or five departments selected. That audit looked at our Leonian Keeble projects for the Hive and Liberty. And they looked at such things as the proper steps for public works procurement and contract award. Happy to say that that memorandum says there were no audits, audit concerns reported. So on your agenda tonight is the 2023 budget adoption, and Nicole has made reference to that in the prior month. And of course, we met with the finance committee in July. And so I wanted to use this opportunity to let you see what 2023 budget will look like for our fifth and final year of the bond. Important to know that this, the fifth and final year means that we have to have those funds committed or encumbered. It doesn't mean that they have to be spent, but they do have to be committed. We are currently, our total project budgets are 82 million. And in that amount is 5.2 million in interest earnings during the life of the projects. We also have about $647,000 of reimbursements. For example, from the city CSO projects that took care of some of the landscaping costs that were the result of their projects and the Lincoln Street paving and our E-rate reimbursement. You'll see a familiar pie chart down below, and you can see how those, that 82 million dollars is distributed. So turning to the next page, if you're following along, how do we get to the fifth and final year budget? Well, we take our remaining cash and investments, which is $13 million. We deduct from that our encumbrances of 7 million. And so we bring to you a 2023 budget of $6,347,000. We adopt the budget at the fund level, but as you know, we track our projects by site. If you go to the next page, you'll see a financial snapshot where I've got that $6 million distributed by project. The first row of that snapshot, by the way, says as of June 30th, 2021, and it should say 2022. But you'll see that those figures agree with 82 million that I just referenced on the prior page. So we continue to carry budget capacity at each of our open branches. And for example, the server rooms that I just described, we continue to find added work and needs as our branches are operating. So we keep this budget capacity available in each site so that we can take care of those needs and also any furniture and fixtures that were not anticipated. Since we adopted the budget in 2022, a year ago, for the 2022 year, we've earned $229,000 worth of interest. You'll see that, that we bring that into our budget now, and that makes it available for us to spend in this final year. We currently have $858,000 in contingency remaining, and that's primarily for South Hill, Indian Trail, and the Central Branch, which is still underway. We look forward to 2023 with cautious optimism. Our primary focus remains on completing our projects to the best way possible. And we are smack in the middle of our Phase Two projects, and these renovations continue to provide surprises for us. And when we have to make adjustments to our construction designs and costs, and we will fund those, of course, through these remaining budgets at those two branches. And we have the installation projects forthcoming for our 24/7 kiosks. Those, I don't know that we are going to see any costs on those in this year. They're still, the locations are still being finalized, and the design work will still need to take place. So quite frankly, I don't see us getting out to bid in this 2022 year. So I look for that all to take place in 2023. And so with that, I am open for questions, and then this budget will be contained within the budget adoption that's coming up on the agenda.
Right, any questions to Penny? I do, the addition of a sink in one of the rooms at the Hive, was that purposely left out of the design? And it was decided later that all the rooms needed that, is that?
Well, I frankly don't know that we have that answer. There was a drain installed in each of the studios, and for some reason, this room did not have a sink in the design. You know, with seven projects, I think we've done a pretty darn good job of trying to anticipate and catch things. But I don't know that this was on any, I think it surprised all of us when the need was there and it wasn't there. It certainly wasn't on the initial plans or it would have been installed.
I can chime in and provide some clarification on that. The initial intention for that room in the Hive was kind of as a classroom. And when we started to see the needs evolve in the building, we realized they were doing more hands-on art projects. And when we saw that kids were actually carrying like paintbrushes and stuff down the hallway in order to clean them off, we decided to put the sink in there so they could use it in a more flexible way.
And I think that was my question, is after watching some of the usage in the building. I assume some of the other buildings too might be some improvements made.
Oh, yeah.
Thank you, Penny.
Alright, anything else for Penny? Alright, thank you Penny.
Thank you.
Alright, and now we have the bond construction project update. Lorraine?
Good evening, the projects are well underway. We're still doing closeout along with some changes, like Penny mentioned at Liberty and Hive. We're also, and Shadle, we're also, Shadle's mostly closed out, so we'll do P.O. work at there while we continue to close out Liberty and Hive. Central has moved to the closeout stage after it opened. So contractor is finishing some last-minute items, a punch list. There's still some AV items that, you know, are supply chain issues. So they're finishing up that stuff, and we're continuing on that. South Hill and Indian Trail are well underway, they're over 50% done. And we are meeting with them every week and going through things. And like Penny said, being a renovation, we found a few things we didn't expect, so we're just dealing with them. Indian Trail is a little bit ahead of South Hill and finishes. It's got carpet down, the wood floor has started in the program room. You know, most of the painting is done, they've got a lot of the ceiling work done. Electrical trim out is underway. Next month, we'll be turning over the electrical room to SPL to get their internet going. So things are going pretty well there. We will, the wood ceilings are one supply chain issue, and we'll have most of the building done before the wood arrives for those ceilings. So we'll do things a little out of sequence, but that's kind of how you have to do construction in 2023 after COVID. South Hill is going along too, they're just a little bit behind because we add some mechanical systems, the systems that go up into the ceiling. So they're working on that, but painting is mostly done, bathrooms, they're putting in partitions, the tile work's all done. Working on, you know, just getting that mechanical systems up into the ceiling, and then they could finish the rest of the building, the painting and the carpeting and that kind of stuff. Any questions?
I had one question on your report, and I'm wondering what a chiller yard is.
A chiller is a piece of mechanical equipment that sits outside the building. There's an existing chiller yard, but we've ordered a new chiller to put in there, and we've had to make some modifications to the yard and such. But yeah, chiller is what's going to provide your cooling in the summertime.
Alright, thank you.
It's that sound.
Right. Alright, any other questions for Lorraine? Alright, thank you very much.
Sure.
Alright, now we have the chairman's report, and there is no chairman's report. So I've turned over to Andrew for the executive director.
Alright. You are. Other than getting more and more settled in at Central, we have been serving as a designated cooling center for the city of Spokane. And just because we wanted to, you know, let the board know how that is working. We're not seeing a huge number of folks coming in using us as a given. On days that the city is needing it, the cost of extending those hours is picked up by the city of Spokane. So we have an agreement with them where their security comes in and takes control of the building post our normal operating. Now, that's in an ideal situation, they can't always activate security. Sometimes they're going to be using ours or another security brand. But that's what we're trying out this year, and it seems to be working well on our end. And, you know, just working out some kinks as we're moving along. It wasn't the case where we could really be as useful in that capacity last year because we didn't really have our facilities at the capacity we currently have. So it's a little bit of a different situation this year. Should we reach other capacity, capacity limits for that, then the city will need to come up with a different plan to address the need. Right now, a fourth and a fifth. Return of Lilac City Live last week, had over 200 people come out for the event. And the next one is going to be this Thursday, encourage you to come along and check it out. New stage, new sound, same old Ryan. Special author, special guest includes Jess Walter, comedian Ryan McPone, and musical guest Tanya Bone. So the show starts at eight, if you can. Also, opportunity, if you haven't checked out the Hive, we do new open studios on Wednesdays from four to seven. For that, when the artists will be available, you can talk with them, learn about what they're doing, what they've been making as a result of utilizing the studio. Also, another new program that we've been doing, it's been at Shadle Park, where we're hosting events on the farm produce stand every Thursday from two to four. And this is dedicated, we're going to dedicate it to training veterans transitioning into civilian life on skills related to yard farming. You can purchase produce there, really fun, a great community event. As far as our DEI work goes, we're holding our second session of running for staff around racial equity, actually, tomorrow. We are going to be, our admin team is going to be staffing that during self-service hours so that more frontline staff can attend us. So that's some feedback that we got from our staff of, hey, if you can take away the actual barrier of us working with customers during the hours, then we can go to these programs. So we're excited to see how that goes. Next up for our discussion group would be a topic of homelessness. We'd be taking a break from reading and watching a documentary film called The Home Stretch, which is available via Canopy, one of the services that we offer here. And we are also working to provide, expanding our partnership with Spokane Public Schools. We've briefed the board about in the past around collection management and self-checkout equipment. So we'll be working in bringing on five new middle schools over the next month or so. And when the last two of their middle school projects open next year, we'll be bringing those facilities on as well. So really great way for us to not only build on that partnership, but improve the experience and access to the collection for the students throughout the school district. So very unique. Sometimes I look at the partnership that we have with Spokane Public Schools as just amazing. They're great to work with, and we're just so appreciative that we can have this relationship and trust with them. So we'll see how that goes as we're progressing more on. As far as staffing goes, our star of the month went to Dinda. We received some complaints about some noxious weeds in the meadow grass at Liberty Park. So she went out, maybe Charis needs some of the weeds, not the weed, but the edible plants. And in the morning hours, she came out with a shovel and dug out the noxious weeds herself. We really appreciate that dedication and her expertise for making that a better experience for the community. As you'll note, last month, we had a lot of new staff come on board. This month is no different. You can see Samantha Murphy, we've got her in special events coordinator. We've got some pages that have come on board. And we also have one of our new staff under Shane, he's our current affairs specialist. So he'll be, he'll be really managing some interesting discussions in the community moving forward. So we're super psyched to have them on. And finally, we are waiting a timeline for the remainder of the budget process in the city. So we hope to get our proposal in line and in time, but we really, we have no idea what those next steps are going to be. So it could be interesting here. Any questions for me?
Oh, I have a question about the sponsorship of the middle schools. And is that, so we're helping to manage their collection, but it's still separate from ours, that?
They will be, their collection will be accessible via our catalog. So the public can also request items from the middle school to be sent to their branch. The students can request items from all of our locations, be sent to their school as well. They'll be on the same catalog as us, and we have an agreement with them where they can buy off of our contract. With case solutions as well. So we hope that this, you know, these five, these seven, eight, nine middle schools will be the start, something much bigger. And, you know, maybe target high schools next, if it makes sense. So Charis has been a big person behind coordinating all this and getting this off the ground. So it's, it's a good partnership.
Any other questions for Andrew? Alright, thank you, Andrew. Alright, next on our agenda is the council liaison report. Councilmember Bingel?
Hi there, how are you?
How are you today?
Good, good, alright. So this is what we know, so you already discussed it, but library is being activated for cooling centers. And next week, we're going to be voting on ordinance that would codify a public process and criteria for citing essential facilities, police precincts, things like that. And I'm interested to hear again any of your thoughts on that. Sorry, you can hear my two-year-old in the background. Hi bud. I know, I know, give daddy a minute and then I'll be right there, okay? And then other things, we allocated $27 million of ARPA funding. So we, a million and a half went to community centers specifically for certain capital projects. We did $2.4 million for collective bargaining agreements defined in ADIPAY. Five million for local education success. Five million for nonprofits, five million for small businesses, five million for a municipal justice center, two and a half million for the neighborhood business districts, one million for multicultural centers, and $350,000 for admin costs, which was actually going to save us about $8 million as the city sets aside like 10% for an administrative reserve on all the projects. And so this is a huge reduction in that number. So that's a little bit of the council update from myself.
Alright. Thank you, councilmember Bingel.
Absolutely.
Alright, thank you very much.
Yep.
And now, next on the agenda is our communication report.
Yeah, I'll be presenting for Amanda. My name's Alina, for those of you who don't know, I work with Amanda and Skylar. So a few highlights in the marketing and communications. We finally exceeded 10,000 Facebook fans, which is great. We earned over, we gained over 300 this last month. Our new library card designs are being, are really coming to light and gaining a lot of earned media for us. And a lot of people are just loving them. We actually gained some national attention from the Library Journal and the Washington State Library. And we had some professional photos and videos done of all of our spaces, including Central, Shadle Park, Hilliard, and Liberty Park. And they look fantastic, and we're already using those with our new special events coordinator, Sam Samantha. She's doing an amazing job getting those photos up on the website and really coordinating all of these commercial and non-commercial events, but mostly commercial. A few highlights in regards to our social media content. You'll notice a lot of the, we had just an incredible month of engagement. We gained a whole bunch of followers, and you'll notice the shift in top content is now reels. People have really leaned into videos on social media, this is particular to Instagram. And we had a 380% increase in impressions, which means people viewing them on Instagram this last month. In regards to our email marketing, I, one of the things that I just tied together was, earlier was the newsletter that we did, the second newsletter we did in July promoted our library app, and we actually saw a 98% increase in downloads for our Spokane Library app this last month. So that was a really great return on investment for us and a great stat to measure. Other than that, recommendations, recommended reads continues to really perform well. And really, our top content was Central opening and the new library cards. The earned media we got was, of course, the cooling centers, Lilac City Live from the Inlander, and the new library cards. So kind of repeating all of the things that Andrew had already said too. So any questions for marketing and communications?
Thank you.
Yeah.
Alright, now we'll move on to new business. Now, that starts with the 2023 budget adoption.
Thank you. Alright, we'll just kind of go through in the packet, you know, it's a little thick, but I won't, I won't keep it too long. So if we just go past the cover page, the overall highlight here. So for the 2023 library operations budget, with fund number 1,300, this is what you're all very familiar with, looking at our monthly financial, the combined statement of revenue and expenditure. So really, the expenditure budget we're looking at for next year will be $12,405,218. We are anticipating a further increase on our levy lift dollars. So if you look at our bottom line right now, we're presenting a budget of an excess of expenditures by $345,100. And so if you look at our bottom line right now, we're presenting a budget of an excess of expenditures by $345,165. We are, we are asking for another 3.4 FTE. We're also going to have a cushion to potentially adopt additional FTEs. We have that need throughout the year, which we will bring to board for our people once we have that number. So let's look at revenue in a little bit more detail on the stage. And so for our financial resources, we will be getting our 2.5% standard increase from the city of our general fund allocation. And as far as the levy lift, I did anticipate a 7% increase, which was very conservative. I spoke with the city budget office last week and they're saying our numbers actually should be closer to about 2.3 million. Which is great, that 25% increase is huge, but I didn't want to publish that here and like really see that. And they actually re-released that number. So it's a significant amount and that's something I will report to the board and do in advance. So and then as you can see for our non-tax related revenue, not a lot of changes there, really an overall increase of about $16,700. That's really for interest earnings and a little bit in contributions to the friends of the library. Increasing their volume of work. We also do have the event space for commercially use. We didn't budget for anything for that next year. We're going to kind of just see how that pans out and what it's worth of. Moving on to the next, this is an overall glance of our expenditure by service area. As you can see, the, the public services area is 43% of our overall expenditure budget. This also does house 65% of our staff members. And so if we move on, then I will, we'll kind of look at this from a comparison to the 2022 budget. So here's the expenditure by type. Again, that's, that's that number just by category instead. So the next we'll go to the comparison. Very, very high, high level. And then behind all these stats, we do have the supplemental financial reports by service, high service area that have these categories. It looks the exact same as our normal monthly reporting. So that's just supplemental to these. So here, we're looking at our staffing cost compared to the 2022 budget. Overall increase of $619,824. Again, we're looking at adopting an additional 3.4 FTE. That's three total additional people and those would be frontline staff. So that's the library, libraries that are most. And then the point four is to make one of our, it's our youth outreach position from a full-time to a part-time, sorry, from a part-time to a full-time position. So that's the bad point for it. Which really is three additional headcount. And so move on. Through the supplies and services page compared to 2022. Overall, not a huge increase here, 36,252. We do have some big fluctuations within that. So let's see what I have here. So basically, our increase is going to be outside consulting needs, which we're, we do still have the EEIS as part of, part of that ongoing work that we're going to be doing. We're also implementing a tuition reimbursement program that we can invest in the growth of our staff members. We also are seeing an uptick in the cost of internet and software and licensing services. We also are looking at an increase in insurance premiums in, in travel and training opportunities and also for our, our security of our services, which will be open at Central full-time that full year. And now that, that really is offset, all of those increases because we have a cost reduction in bringing our barcoding back, back in-house. So we're seeing some, it's a big cost that is there. We also do not any longer have to pay for our lease space at SBA or North House, so that, that cost is going away as well. And so move on to the incentive fund cut. And so really, when it comes to the, the facilities repairs and fuel, a couple of these, the city does not adjust. But this is something that city controls as far as the budget goes. If there's any major changes to, to what they actually end up, end up establishing, I will also report those to you guys as well. But really, what, what the interfund services we get from the city in sale are things like our banking, processing invoices, payroll processing, things, things like that. Moving on to the last, capital and debt services expenditure. So really not, not a lot of changes here either. We, we are anticipating about a 3% increase in costs for our library books and materials purchasing. We also do have a, an ask for $70,000 to replace one of our facility trucks. It's kind of hanging on for, for the rest of your life. It's, it's a time to replace it, which will be fully replacing our, our group revenue. That's one of our asks for next year as well. And then, but the following pages really are just, again, those supplemental pages that are in the form of our normal monthly financial reporting that, that match basically the graphs we were going through. So if you keep on going back past our capital, you'll see that there's a bond fund one, just like Penny, Penny mentioned earlier during her update. This just shows the expenditures that we've gone throughout the years, the encumbrance carry forward expected and what that 2023 budget looks like, which is $6,327,769. And then after that, we do have our organizational chart. So this is really just an overview, a visual of each service area where those, the FMV and, and headcount numbers are supposed to be at the app, provided that we do adopt 3.4 additional FTE for, for next year. And then after that, you're going to see our financial projections that we did go over the finance committee meeting during the month of July. Really, so this is just kind of a snapshot of our, what our projections of like through 2027. It's a, it's a very high level number. It really is kind of, it is a focus on our, our fund balance, which doesn't take into account what our actual results are in 2022, which is based off of our budget. Which just gives you a, a pretty high level snapshot of what we're looking at. And the assumptions that you see here are essentially everything that I've just gone, gone over.
And again, the levy lift is at the seven, not the anticipated 20 plus.
Very, very vital for that. And then we, in, in regards to our fund dollars as well, we do have some, some energy costs that we're going to be looking at for our central building. Washington State has some regulations that will be required by the year 2026 for any public building that's an excess of 100,000 square feet. So we'll, we'll be doing some, some solar, probably working with a company that's appropriate to, to, to implement that. I don't know exactly what it looks like yet, but that's in our, in our future as well. So at that, I would really like to open for any questions, thoughts, comments?
I guess the only question I have, this, I've been to this before. Is I see that there's no staffing training. Do you have some online training now?
It's currently managed under Allen's Department for Human Resources, where you don't have a specific person that manages completes the training. It generally falls to managers. Or sometimes we bring in outside folks for the winter trains, especially like around their DEI and things like that, bring a different perspective to that.
And then all of the new headcounters under public services?
That is present.
Yep.
And we don't know if branch.
Not at this point. We're anticipating, but, but then we do, and we don't. South Hill and Indian Trail are not, you know, in use right now, so it's, we think it's going to get enough to get us through and keep all branches.
Where do we vote here with the budget?
Well, it's a great question. What we're hearing is that we will be able to get some time with the mayor and city administration to present our asks and needs. That's set sometime, maybe in August, although we're happy with August. So I'm anticipating probably sometime in September is when those meetings will happen. I have not heard of any presentation time in Plano City Council at this point, but it just might not have been shared. So we're just kind of, we're trying to get our stuff done as much as we can in order to be prepared for as many unknowns as there are. So PDD is the law official answer to that one.
So you would like to improve the budget as presented? We'll see.
I would like to have the board's support as we're moving forward.
And then through the presentation process with Mayor's Office and Council, is there, what kind, is there a chance we're going to see changes we're going to have to look at again?
There's always that chance. I'm not anticipating any. We have all these new facilities. Kind of the same situation that we were in last year, where people need to experience the facilities, they need access to the facility. And what we're asking for isn't much beyond the 2.5% from the general. So I don't, I don't anticipate that, any issues, but I mean, as the quote said too, interfund charges come, come in in a different way. They just haven't put those costs in. And if those revisions were there, then yes, we'll, you know, we'll come back to the board and let you know what we're pursuing. But I, I'd like us to be able to present with the constants of the board of this.
We'll budget you 2.5%?
For the general fund?
Yeah. But there are MOs saying 3.9%.
That there's, there's potential for that, but I don't think we can do that.
We've never received the full percentage of increase that other departments see from the general fund dollars. Since I've been here for nine years, it hasn't been above 2.5, maybe 2.6 out of 1. Part of my communication with the mayor's office will be that this 2.5 that they look at as an option should no longer be an option. There'd be, we are the only department that they do that with. And quite frankly, I think it's demoralizing to the organization. So that'll be part of my communication. We shouldn't, we shouldn't.
It's not an option.
It's not an option. Well, we're doing the work that, we're, we're doing our work on our end. It's just the, it's a little murky at this point.
Yeah, well, I'm sure. Well, I guess all in agreement to approve the adoption of the budgets from 1300. Library op, operation room, 3265 library capital bond and the carry forward, carry forward of encumbrances that remain outstanding in the year of 2022.
And I will second. All right. It's been moved and seconded. Is there any further discussion? All right, hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, motion passes.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thanks a lot.
All right, and now, Ryan, you're up.
Okay.
Our video presentation. Whatever you most comfortable with.
My name is Ryan Dean Tucker. I'm the video education specialist and I host live events on our stage. An overview of the video studio, we have four PSR cameras. We use the still cameras for video cameras, 4K resolution. Available. And then we have four Fresno lights, which are real light bulb. And five LED lights. We have a teleprompter, we have dollies, we have microphones, we have everything you would need to make any type of video you would want. Like a screen streaming, bring your black backdrop curtain, cool slate floors to roll around on your chairs. And a few set pieces. Yeah, and we have Mondays, Wednesdays and Fridays from 10 to 1 is our drop-in time. So if you wanted to come in and just learn a little bit more about the studio itself, if you wanted to work to be specific with the types of cameras we have and how to use them. This is the time to do that. It's more informal and kind of just hop in and happen to be here. Tuesday from 10 to 1, I do a video studio orientation, which is very similar to the drop-in time, but I don't need to do specifics about the cameras. And if you want to do manual settings and you want to shoot for a certain situation or, you know, very specific. The first week of every month, I'm doing a teaching series. So I have local professionals come in and teach something specific about video making. This month, our first one was Neil Clacklin. I've worked with him in the industry for a very long time. He can talk three-point lighting, interview style lighting for, like for subjects. Close to 20 people showed up today and it kind of went a little longer. We got into more depth. It was very energetic. Everybody was very excited. It was really cool. Did a lot of hands-on stuff and people got to like, let's see, did a bunch of stuff like that. Next month, I'm anticipating even bigger. Colin, our T bag, he's going to teach how to do gaming videos. There's a lot of youth that is very interested in this and it's going to show you how to run a Twitch channel and superimpose yourself into your video game footage and talk with the screen and incorporate like chat features and things like that. Following month, I have a stop, stop motion animation course that we're going to teach, which came up several bits that have just popped by. Have shown interest in that. We make on their phones, little, just taking pictures and then putting it through a video software thing. Make sure them have some, actually really do that and use lighting and clay and we'll do some actual like drawing animation. Yeah, we'll go into that. And then that following month will be a documentary style filmmaking. So I have another friend come in and he's a documentary filmmaker. He's going to show you how to do lighting for that, shoot for that. How to separate yourself and subject and go to quite in-depth about that. And I am also, in addition to that, starting to, now that I'm figuring out kind of what the schedule is like and what the workload is like. I will be eventually moving to other branches to teach certain things and something about the space that we have here on all the other branches. With some of the equipment we have here to show them what's available and maybe do small training scenes that we can do. Yeah, and then there's, I just can't picture a few, a few things.
Alina, hit the tape.
Things that have already been shot in the studio.
There we go.
Here we go.
And I specialize in original floral-based art.
Hey everybody, Nate here to check in with you on credit scores today. Credit scores can determine so much about your future, like Tina. Would you like to introduce yourself and tell how you got started in politics?
Sure, I'm Tina Pockley, I'm chair of the Washington State Democrats.
Hi, my name is Paul Price. I've lived here in Spokane for the last 34 years.
It was like one of those old cars with the fabric ceiling that's slowly caving in. That's how you know you have a bad car. If your ceiling doesn't even want to be in your car anymore, that's how you know. I went over 20 bumps, my hair was all staticky for the rest of the day. Looked like a science experiment that went wrong. Looked like a science experiment that went wrong.
So just a few things I read in there was a gal who uh, wanted to create, she's been in several times already, but she's trying to kind of. Create promotional videos for her art and try to get it more out there and be seen and sell her art. Worked for three, three times, uh, the guy, second guy, that was a uh. A job uh, interview, came to create a video thing because it was a teaching position that's through the video school essentially, and uh. Needed a show. It doesn't even matter what I say, like, I already have everybody be big, so we have. Four lights and the speech camera and all that stuff, he's like, I already won. Um, we've also had Paul in there, uh, he wrote a book, he's reading a chapter at a time and putting it on his YouTube channel. Uh, I have another uh, watercolor artist, taking pictures of her art and also doing kind of a Bob Ross style thing where she. Uh, showing her technique and explaining her process. Had businesses come in and take headshots for all their employees. Uh. Uh, singers come in and do uh, uh, music video stuff. I have a band coming in next week, who's going to record in a recording studio and then come over and make a uh. You know, lip sync their, their tunes they just recorded, but uh, they're going to use it as a reel to promote their band and get more gigs. Um, so it's kind of run the gamut, I've had uh. Kids, he has nine in there that are editing and shooting things, and I've had people that's uh, over seventy-eight in there that are doing uh, awesome things. Uh, also, uh, gave a presentation to uh, the search staff of uh, Crash, it's requested. Kind of dawned on me that we can also make in-house uh, videos that would help with like training things. Uh, so you know, not everybody can make it to something that we need to be trained on, you can do that right here in the house. So we're going to do stuff like that. Um, having this space uh, with everything that we have and the size of the space. It is about a five to ten thousand dollar value uh, for the time that people can reserve it. Four hours for a space like this with all that equipment anywhere else in town could be close to ten thousand dollars. But it's a true service that we have and it's incredible. I'm super set for being, when people do, it's like a level playing field for everybody, so often. Uh, other than that, we should definitely bang the gavel more often in these meetings. Um, and never Penny's on, we should always say thank you Penny for your thoughts and. Well, so you lied it this Thursday and I really heard you go for fun, I shot a thing today, it was scattering like a bunch of people here, uh. Really funny video segment, Jess is a very funny guy and he was, uh, he has no shame. Very silly video, so I hope you'll come this Thursday. Thank you so much.
It's awesome to hear the diversity of the usage already.
Yeah, absolutely.
It's, that's really cool.
Uh, the orientations on Tuesday, there's, I mean, it kind of pops in and out, but like overall, around twenty people throughout the, the hours. It's kiddos to like see that, that everybody, everybody's. Great.
Uh, and using the video studio, is there any, is there, is there any self-service time or are you always there when people are in there?
So under Monday to Friday, I have to be in the weekends, um. We're trying to facilitate a way to find us out, but through those Tuesday orientation plans, it's kind of like uh, you get certified, like, I know you're okay to. Use a two thousand dollar camera and not break it or fall away with it. Uh, so uh, currently, I just get uh, notifications, uh, we're going to set up for me when somebody goes to the. You need to go and kind of call them and say, hey, what are you, they're there on Saturday, what exactly are you looking to do? You know, what your project is, you just want to see a face, and so far, it's everybody, it's, everybody's done that on the weekend, it's been like, oh, I know what it's doing. Okay, well, why don't you just come tomorrow? And I'll straighten out the gaps.
Are people allowed to take the equipment out?
Probably gear stays in the studio.
Okay.
Um, we did do one thing, a gal was shooting a uh. A video for uh. A presentation she worked for some corporation and they were talking about office, uh. Etiquette or something and we shot back at the admin offices. I go with you and you say in the library. Yeah, people can just walk out.
And then, so then I was looking online, it's so, are all the studios, is that a sixty-day, you can't vote until sixty days before, as we know, that, that's what they're all.
Yeah.
And so, and then I wanted a question, how many times did you have to ride in a condola?
Very good. I think the greatest time was wearing a wool jacket. You done?
It was twice.
It was twice.
Yeah.
It's got like. It became work.
Yeah. That's about all these.
All right, any other questions for Ryan?
Thank you.
All right, and uh, let's see, that is the end for our new business. Are there any additional agenda items or changes? We do know, there are, uh, and do we have anybody signed up for public comment? No, nobody on the list here. And nobody online, so our next regular meeting will be Tuesday, September twenty, and that will be at the Hive. Uh, and there is no executive session today, so with that, uh, we are adjourned.